So anyway, my apologies for the board having their back to you, but it's sort of difficult to see what's in front of us without turning our backs to you. So that being said, what we are going to be doing for the next hour and a half is I'm going to open it up to the board questions. I would like to start with this presentation which is right before us, which is the enhancements around the project itself. And I would like to start with one question, I think it's probably best answered by Mike, or Frank. And it's relative to the presentation that when you first started, you had shots of different plazas, passeos throughout the country and maybe in Europe, et cetera. And as I look at this plan, most of those improvements are on your side of the street. And I understand it's going to be very difficult to make the improvements on the Delmar Highlands side of the street, but I think, you know, there needs to be some ability, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Delmar Highlands, but to really, to have that enhancement that you were proposing or showing examples of, I think the improvements need to be on both sides of the street rather than the pearls just being on your side of the boulevard.
No. First thing, it's not my side of the street, it's everybody's side of the street.
But relative to the project, it's the project's side of the street. The whole point is, the project, if it's going to open up to the community, and it's going to be a gem, or it's going to be those pearls, it's sort of, planning-wise, it needs, you know, to have it on both sides. So I don't know what you were...
And I think, I think you're absolutely right, Mr. Chair. But there are some difficulties. One of which is, this is a whole different ownership of the, of the site. But in my architectural opinion, I think that it would be greatly enhanced if you could repeat some of those things on the opposite side of the street. And I would urge the board to encourage them to work with everybody on doing that. But I, I can't offer that because we don't own the property.
Well, you are making some improvements on Delmar Highland, Delmar Heights on the north side, so I assume that's in the right-of-way?
Public right-of-way.
Okay, and so would there be improvements on the Delmar, El Camino Real, right-of-way to the east?
Chairman White, we could take a look at what opportunities exist over there, but as you know, it, we could look at what, what could be done within the public right-of-way over there, and we can go back and take a second look at that. It does pose some challenges, but certainly, as part of the Delmar Highlands Shopping Center enhancements, and their master plan and their original approval, they actually had some things that, you know, perhaps we can encourage them to implement those now with some of the expansion that they have going on.
Yeah. Well, you know, it all gets down to the concept of the town center.
Mm-hmm.
And so, for a town center concept, as I'm still looking at it, the town center is still not there in the sense of imitation of the town center. There's improvements on one side, but not the other side. A lot of the improvements are within the project, and so the improvements along the street, right-of-way, are really nice, but as far as a sense of a town center, that improvement has to go beyond...
Let us go back and take a look at what, what can be accomplished within the right-of-way on that side. We definitely tried to provide the pedestrian connection here, which we know is only one small component of it. And certainly, the, the opportunity to punctuate with the enhanced park here is on that side. But we'll go back, have that feedback, and see what opportunities exist on the other side that wouldn't conflict with what was in the original master plan for the town center.
Yeah, thanks. I'll open it up with the board. From my left, whoever has a question, but keep the questions focused on the presentation of these community amenities. Our discussion of the actual project will be at a later date, so the concentration right now is on these community benefits, and whether these community benefits are worthy of, of the project, or worthy of the community accepting those benefits and comments that you would have about those benefits. So whoever wants to start from my left? Chris, can...
Okay. Just had a quick question about the, the bicycle lanes that you've shown on Delmar Heights Road, and, and then also on El Camino Real. I was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on exactly what type of bicycle lanes they would be, and if they would be, you know, the Class 1 or Class 2, as you say? You know, would there be some sort of, any, any kind of actual physical separation between the bicyclist and the, and the automobile, or what would be the, you know, the width of those lanes? You know, et cetera?
Thank you. And I'll let John help me on this a little bit, but it, it remains a Class 2 bike lane on the street. However, we do have bicycle connections that come through the project, so there is a way, excuse me, let me grab my pointer. There is a way for more of the recreational biker, who maybe doesn't want to necessarily be on the street, to actually come through some of the connections that go adjacent to the project, as well as through the project in here. We actually have a bicycle concierge area that's being proposed internal to the project here, but the ones along the perimeter, they won't have a physical separation, so they won't be a Class 1, they're considered a Class 2. But our belief, and from talking to people who are avid bikers, in fact, there was a young lady up here just a second ago, I can't remember where she went, who was expressing that just, just having that seamless separation and that visual separation actually really changes the feel for what a bicyclist experiences there.
And if, if I could interject as well, you may have noticed when they resurfaced Delmar Heights Road and put the fresh coat of paint, the bike lanes stood out for the first time. You really could see the bike lanes, because the paint was all clear, and the asphalt was nice and brightly black, and the, the striping for the bike lanes was detectable. By putting that as a seamless, monolithic pore of concrete, we're going to have two different materials that will permanently differentiate the bike lane from the travel lane. So the bicyclist's lane will be clearly marked, where now the motorist may not be sensitive to that lane. And, and so the motorist is going to be more aware of that bicycle activity.
Thank you. Yes, John, I also reside in Carmel Valley, but only 25 years, not as long as you, and I do own my own business for the last 25 years in Carmel Valley as well.
That's, that's one up on me.
Okay, great. And from what I'm listening tonight, this is a complete, a different breed from what we have been presented in the past. This is a major improvement overall, for the community and for all of us to reside and work here. And obviously, this is only external, and to me, from what I'm showing here and what I'm seeing, it is a magnificent improvement. However, I'm concerned as well, as a board member and a resident here, regarding the congestion as well, but tonight is not the place perhaps to talk about that. However, I do trust the city traffic engineers that they were here last meeting. For three hours, we really, you know, the questions and answers and all that, it was, to me, it was satisfactory. If they are able to conduct the traffic, so we won't get congestion, you know, all day long, that would be an improvement. And I do commend Kilroy for this presentation, and this is the spirit of the community. This is how we get along together, by listening, communicating, and, you know, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a follow-up question to the bicycle path, is there the possibility of making it non-contiguous along with the sidewalk? Because I know it's a separate kind of surface, and you can visually see it a little bit better, but even looking at the picture right there, you can see the car right behind the bicyclist. It's still very close in, and it would be wonderful to have some sort of separation of the bike path from the...
We did take a look at that along our frontage, because the challenge then becomes, then how does it connect up to the other areas? And so that's where the challenge really became difficult, because as you go further up, you don't have that, and so bringing, I mean, again, there are opportunities for the bicycles to come through the project, but to have them then go out into a situation where sometimes creating that, you know, kind of offset situation actually creates other problems associated with it. So unless there was a complete wholesale change of what that bike lane looks like along the entire length of Delmar Heights Road, there just isn't the ability to actually maneuver through it. So again, we, we felt that the opportunity existed for somebody who actually was maybe looking for something a little bit more of a leisurely stroll rather than necessarily commuting the whole way, that there were other opportunities to have bicycle connections that do have those buffers, but to change that whole entire environment along the road is something that would actually have to be a pretty comprehensive capital improvement project that the city would have to undertake.
Okay. And then the crosswalks, I see you noted that those are a, well, they're a different color. Are they a different material? Are they raised? Is there anything about the crosswalks that makes them stand out a little bit more and...
We haven't fully developed that yet, so it could be a combination of different colors, different materials, probably not raised, but definitely can have different materials and textures associated with them, so that it does start changing what those visual cues are for the driver as they're going through there.
Yeah, we want the driver to be aware and to announce that this is a crosswalk, so from a safety point of view, so that when the pedestrian does cross, they feel a little more secure because it's announced.
And if they feel that difference in texture, I think it is also a traffic calming...
Right.
...device. You mentioned the, the field, the possibility of the field and the, the connection across the street from the, from the entranceway. One of the pearls, I guess. Somebody asked the question about financing of that. Could you explain a little bit about whether you would anticipate then the funding of the field coming from the FBA, and then you said maybe engineering and design elsewhere? What were your thoughts on that?
The project will generate a large sum of FBA fees, anywhere from 12 to 14 million dollars. And this is perhaps 11 to 12 million dollars more than what is currently in the FBA program. So it's new money. So the opportunity to design an improvement at the existing park and try to increase the utilization of the fields, there'll be new money, and it should be sufficient to even fund the construction of this project. So you would be able to encourage, we would advance the design so that the project gets moving and, and gets there sooner rather than later. And as our project develops, we'll be generating the FBA fees, and it'll be able to build it. It's all tied to the city. The city has to approve it, it's a city facility. We have to get approvals of the Park and Rec Council, the Park Development Board, I mean, there's a lot of steps. And these are concepts to show that it would work, that it's possible. The 30-foot-high wall that separates the main campus of the, of the community park from El Camino Real is certainly not inviting. It certainly fulfills the parking count, but that's the last place you park, and it's not an encouragement. We tried to take that space and make it usable, even though it's on a hillside setting. You'd be able to walk all the way up without having to take steps, the ADA accessibility would be there. So we're taking a place that's not usable, and making, integrating it in to expand it. And when people say, "Well, you can't do that on the hillside," you can think of Presidio Park, where the whole park is on a hillside.
So then are you proposing that Kilroy might help fund the design and engineering, and then the FBA funds would, would do the rest?
Yes, would, would be funds sufficient to do the rest.
Well, what I would like to add to that, John, for, for consideration is that, you know, due respect to the city, but the process at the city does take some time, as we've experienced with the parks in our PHR. So I would like for, if, if this pearl becomes an acceptable item, I think the next step may be that Kilroy advanced the entire funding for the construction as well as the design, and get reimbursed from the FBA at a later date, so that we can have that park sooner than later, because we've had so many issues with getting parks built on time. And so that's...
Well, you know...
...for consideration, and it doesn't have to be addressed tonight.
You know my involvement with financing plans throughout the city. I've written about 20 of them, and worked in about nine or 10 communities. All of that can be achieved, just as you described.
Last question was just that, in the beginning of the project, you showed sort of a swooping pedestrian connection between the entryway to the project, and then to another pearl or pod or park. Is that something that is, is planned, or are we just talking about? Because it doesn't look like the way it's laid out right now, that's possible.
It's, it's not about the project tonight.
I know, but you, you showed it at the beginning, if you say that in a minute...
We showed a graphic to show, to getting from point A to B, but the details are through the project, and, and that would be a hint.
So it's something you're working on?
But real quick, but it is. And it would be a connection that, as Frank pointed out in his graphic, that would actually come through this green belt, this open space area here, which is, actually has the capability of having, you know, community gathering places actually come through, and then connect through in this area. So that actually is being incorporated into the revisions.
Okay.
And if I, could I interject, just as a completing thought? You're talking about that swoop coming in, and it comes through. To Delmar Highlands' credit, and their enhancements, they have a passeo that walks up to the, the counter and the urban plates, and through the project, and again, you can walk through their project and get to the library and the like. So this is an integral part, which right now isn't connected, but we would give that opportunity to provide that connection, so that'll provide more pedestrian activity through their project as well.
That's why I asked the question.
And Board Member Koppick, too, that's one of the things that as we started looking at the 1975 community plan, that connection was actually always called for and anticipated, so...
No, do you have already answered my questions on the, the financing of the other projects? Or the related projects? Thanks.
So this board has, I think, pretty consistently, over the meetings on this project, expressed some interest in a, in a true boulevard, where there's a, a separate roadway, and it's similar to a frontage road along the project, to break up the mass of the street, and also to provide that physical buffer between the, the through traffic and the high-speed traffic to the project, so the string of pearls and then the landscape buffer is more inviting to use. And obviously, that hasn't been proposed here. Can you explain why the applicant, Kilroy, hasn't included that as a, as a benefit?
Well, if I can start, indeed. We looked at that. We looked at the idea of having frontage roads within the, the street. And as we began to look at it, a couple of things came to mind as we approached it. One was the width of the street that the frontage roads would add to it, and how that would affect pedestrian crossings, even though there'd be an island that you'd cross in the median. And as we began to look at, at how we began to enhance the street, it seemed more appropriate and more effective to focus on the edges, and the edges of the street, than to add the frontage road. And then there's the question about how, how well a frontage road with these openings would move traffic, and whether the slow traffic would really be moving as effectively as, as perhaps one might think. So we opted to enhance as a boulevard versus the frontage roads, which we didn't feel was, would be as effective. Yeah, and too, I think one of the things that we thought was really significant here, from creating traffic calming and pedestrian, you know, pedestrian feel, was the fact that, that we're actually creating crosswalks and intersections. And most successful pedestrian streets and boulevards have that. So the idea of a, of a boulevard that's going to separate, you know, the, the street itself and the vehicle movement, don't typically have that kind of crosswalk stop. We just thought that was also a really effective way to kind of create that experience and calm the traffic, and, you know, focus on, on, you know, creating the edge, as Mike described here.
Frank, but I think part of our idea of that frontage road boulevard is to get rid of those intersections. And so I think that's why we've sort of been stressing that frontage road, so we get rid of the intersection, so those, with the frontage roads, those intersections would not be there.
Right. That, for, for me, as an urban designer, that would be a mistake, because I think the intersections, if, if, when we talk about all these roads, these beautiful boulevards and how they work, they're, that, this is how they normally work, that you have intersections that stop traffic. It still, as was talked about earlier, it still flows through just as efficiently. But by, by not, by, by, by creating these things, I think this is how you create an environment where people stop and walk and cross the street, and I think it's, and particularly if we're going to connect it to the other side of the street, like we're talking about here, and, you know, even the discussion you had there. You don't want to have, you don't want to encourage the traffic to just continue through there, you want to create those intersections so that people can cross here, they can cross here, they can walk here, they can cross here. And so that's, I think that's the main reason, together with the width of the street, in that that creates a much bigger sense of area that's dedicated to cars. So I just, my judgment as a urban designer would be that that's the best way to, to create the vision we want.
I, I think the other problem that you have in introducing that, too, especially with the idea of eliminating these intersections, is you're now redistributing the traffic volume, so you're intensifying the traffic at the ends. And so where you can make the ends, the intersections work with mitigation measures, as you go to put and redistribute more traffic into a localized place, it breaks down. So the math doesn't support it.
And I agree with you, John and Frank, that the intersections are important to not only distributing traffic, but connecting the project outside of itself. The boulevard itself is still something that I and maybe others are, are still not convinced that it, it's not a worthy option, in terms of, of making it feel more like a, a special place. But the, the landscape design that's been proposed is, is certainly attractive, and it's an improvement over what was previously shown for the project, so appreciate the, the effort there. The, the off-site improvements, yeah, they're, they're all of great value to the community, of course, which is why you've proposed them, and, and I very much appreciate that. However, has Kilroy considered a development agreement? Because typically with extraordinary benefits, there's a commitment to do those in a development agreement, and the developer gets credit for that. They get the, the special rights, this uncertainty that comes with committing to those extraordinary benefits. So is Kilroy going to do a development agreement? If so, they should put it in this recirculated environmental document now. And if not, how is the community going to know that we are going to end up with these improvements, these benefits? And also the timing, because the timing is just as important as the benefits themselves, and Frisco alluded to that with the, the park issue.
You want to start, or you want...
Let me take that one. So I think most of you know, when I was at the City of San Diego, I was actually the gatekeeper of trying not to do development agreements, because they come with problems for the city in some cases. The level of extraordinary benefit and community benefits that are being provided here are certainly those that would normally be seen in a development agreement. We hadn't originally started with a development agreement, that's something we can talk to the city about, whether the opportunity exists or not. But regardless of whether there's a development agreement or not, I think that we would work with the city to basically build these in, into permit conditions that would ensure that they get implemented as we go forward. Again, it's all subject to the project, obviously, going forward, but either through permit conditions that are appropriate, because again, as, as we mentioned, none of this is mitigation, this is all above and beyond. So these are all essentially extraordinary benefits, but they really are community benefits. So either through permit conditions that are appropriate, or through a development agreement. Again, we hadn't contemplated it, that's something we can have a discussion with the city about. And if we do, then we would, obviously, as you mentioned, that would have to be included in the information that gets recirculated, so we'll take a look at that.
I, I would tell you, Kilroy is committed to do these even without getting the credit of a development agreement. So the commitment is there. The implementation could start at the planning group, as the planning group says, "We want these things." We've given you, I think, 10 or so things. You may not like all of these things, or you may think, "Well, instead of this, do that." But these things with the planning group's recommendation going to the city can be incorporated into approval conditions, you know, at hearings. And so we would work with city staff in order to wordsmith them into conditions, and we intend to build these things as we go along, so they would be there as quickly as the, the project goes forward.
I appreciate that, and I, I think that as a community, we'd be looking for substantially accelerated implementation of these benefits, far, you know, far beyond what they're perhaps scheduled for. So in the very, very early phases of the, of the project. And certainly, in some cases, there'd be reimbursement, I suppose, through the, the FBA, so that Kilroy would be advancing it.
And that's one of the reasons, as an example, with the park design, with Kilroy paying for the architecture and engineering, there are certain things that you, you still obviously go through a community process, you still go through the Rec Council and so on and so forth, but there's not this having to go out to bid on, you know, just some of the complications that come with a government contract. So there is the ability to significantly accelerate some of the design and the implementation of these things, so that is definitely our goal. Because our goal is to have these things roll out with, you know, with the project and different phases of the project, so...
Okay, thank you. That's my questions for now.
Hey Marcela, I think you answered a question I was going to ask, and that question was if I, your, and your response, and my question was going to be, these are definitely extraordinary benefits and not, not mitigation benefits that you would normally be doing. And for instance, along Delmar Heights Road, even though you have landscaping on the north side, the south landscaping would most likely be a project requirement, would it not?
We are going significantly above what the project requirements would be, so, and I'll let Scott, who I think is somewhere blinding it in the light over there, who's our landscape architect of record, but we're not just meeting the landscape standards, we're significantly going above them. And in fact, that's one of Kilroy's trademarks, is that if you look at a lot of their different projects, the, their, the landscape and the outside environment that they create for tenants, for the users of the project, they go well above and beyond on that. So it's, it's significantly above that. So any, everything that we're proposing here, which totals over $5 million in our guestimates right now, the, these are all things that are above and beyond the, any type of mitigation that would be required, or any type of project requirement.
I thought the park enhancements, like 12 million.
But again, that's, we're, we're advancing the architecture and engineering of it, so one of the things that you mentioned, Frisco, whoa, sorry, I am going to be careful here, sorry, was the, the FBA fees from the project could go towards the construction of it, and I think you mentioned then the possibility of then having Kilroy actually advance those funds now, as opposed to the community waiting for them to get paid into the FBA as it goes along. So the construction is a much higher cost. The architecture and engineering, what did we estimate it at? I forget, was it...
Three quarters of a million.
Yeah, it was about three quarters of a million dollars, so...
Okay. And so with all these, you know, extraordinary benefits, there are some extraordinary costs to maintain them. So with the financial situation of the city, and I know with our, even with our MAD district, where we have to take over some of the landscaped areas, and you may not have the answer this evening, but I think an important response that we need from you is that if you are going to do all these improvements, someone's got to maintain them in the future, not after you leave. And so I don't know whether you were also planning on doing a MAD district to take care of those improvements, or whether you're assuming that the city is going to take those over, or whether you're going to develop an HOA to maintain those improvements, but financially, you know, it's great to plant the tree, but someone has to continue to water those trees and maintain them.
Absolutely.
And so that's something that I think you need to address and respond to at a later date or at some future date.
That's a detail that we would work out as we develop the, the design and the improvements.
But it's an important detail to warrant whether we want to accept it, because there's no point in accepting something that we can't maintain.
Right.
With that, Nancy, do you have some...
I think a lot of thought has, is this turned on?
If you go close.
I think a lot of thought has gone into improving how this appears from the exterior, and, and I like that. Having said that, I am a systems thinker, and I still think about the consequences. And one of the things... And one of the things I would like John to address, you briefly touched on traffic calming on High Bluff. I, I'd like more information about that, because there is a three-way stop now, up where the school is on Long Run.
Right.
And I, I know that the neighborhood that I represent, we still have a lot of concerns. So could you expand on that a little bit, please?
So of the, of the ideas that we've contemplated and we would work with the community, we aren't going, planning to do something unilaterally without working with the community. But we're looking at possibly having the speed, the radar speed signs be a permanent improvement along High Bluff, perhaps over by the Overlook Park. The intersection where a three-way stop was proposed by one of the residents in that, in our neighborhood, was at Half Mile and where High Bluff terminates, where it's now a partial stop and a partial yield sign to create that, so that you would create two stops for those short cutters that are trying to bypass El Camino Real. And then we would also look at other features that might be achievable, let's say at the school or at other intersections, where we would enhance the, the intersection as a calming measure to channelize your throat traffic, so that cars would go slower through the intersection. So the idea of these traffic calming measures are to keep cars from going over the 30 miles an hour that's posted speed and, and say that it's, for somebody going around, not going into the community, it's inconvenient to do so and they'll stay on the main streets. And there may be other ideas, when we sit down with the, the neighborhood, they may say, "Well, what about this?" And we say, "Hey, that's a good idea. We haven't thought of everything, but we would work with the community to come up with those ideas."
And Board Member Novak, if I could add one thing to what John is saying. So, all the information demonstrates that there is, that that's not required, but we've heard a perceptual issue, that, that there's a perception that there's going to be cut through traffic. So again, if it's the desire of that neighborhood, we think that there are some solutions that John just described that can be put in to address some of those perceptions, so.
I don't think it's a perception, because in our community, we do experience it now. So I think it goes beyond perception and it is a reality.
Okay.
One thing also, going back to the crosswalks on Delmar Heights Road, as a driver, I want to get from point A to point B as expediently as I can. And as a driver, I'm, I'm not that concerned about how people are getting into the project. So, I don't know, I just wanted to put that out on the table, because, you know, our concerns are getting from point A to point B.
The, I think the point, you're putting the driver hat back on.
Yes, I am.
Because that's for us, if we're not going to this project, we're going home or we're going to go shopping. The point is, if you go 50 miles an hour and stop and wait at a traffic light for three minutes, go 50 miles an hour and stop at another light and wait two minutes, and go up to another one and have to stop, you think you're going fast, but you're being held up because these lights are turning you red. And you're being forced to wait for cars in the minor or opposing move so that you can get through. With the adaptive system, as you get into the queue, you could possibly go through at 35 or 45 miles an hour, not 50 or 55, and not have to stop at all. Once you get that first light and you get in that platoon of cars, you go through and you go all the way through and you'll cut your time, you know, by a significant percentage. Even if you only cut your time in 10% or so, you would see the, the improvement. But if, in certain times of the day and the certain volumes of traffic, when you're pushing a lot of cars through, you can see your time cut as much as San Marcos found anywhere from 19 to 40 some odd percent reduction in time, depending on time of day and the amount of, amount of traffic on the road. We don't want to commit and say, "Well, it'll always be 40%," or "It'll always be just 10%." But the, the adaptive system, the smart system that recognizes the cars on the road will actually get you there faster and perhaps, and hopefully, at a lower rate of speed.
Okay, well, I, I guess there are just so many in my community that are taking issue with that, but I don't want to get into, you know, an argumentative mode. But just out of curiosity, I wanted to go back to what Michael said. Michael, you referenced the 15 acre site, Sears site in Hillcrest.
Yes.
What is the square footage of that project?
I think it, it is about 80,000 square feet of, of commercial. It is 250 residential units and probably another 20, 25,000 feet of civic uses, city use. And then, so that's, you know, I didn't add it up, but I, that's, that's the size of it.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I love the beautification. I think that when I look at the two pictures on the top, on the left with the trees, I like them because I don't see a project. And I'm hoping that, I don't know if I'm supposed to be looking at this in 20 years or are you, you know, are the landscape really going to have mature landscaping where it kind of, you know, when I look at that, I don't see six-foot buildings, so. And I think some of the representations from, looks like Georgetown or other areas in Spain, they're, I think most of them were like two, uh, two or, single story, two story, maybe three story, you know, buildings. So when I look at that, I, I like it, but I'm hoping that you'll keep in mind, you know, if you're really going to make it look like that, I don't have to wait 30 years to see it. And I, you know, I'm wondering if it's really going to be four-foot trees or if the building really going to have.
We don't want to wait 30 years either.
Well, I, I'm just, you know what I mean? I, I'm just not sure, you know, just keep that in mind, I think.
Yeah, point, point well taken.
People love park like.
We have our project landscape architect that's here, Scott. I don't know if you want to interject.
Yeah, I can, I can talk about that thing.
Why don't you get a mic?
You're going to have to grab a mic. I'm sorry, if we could, Victor.
These two sections that we took here really were not designed to, like, look at the project, but to describe what the streetscape would be like. So this one, which is on the north side of Delmar Heights Road, is really to describe what it would be like to have a parkway there instead of having a contiguous sidewalk there. So the street trees, which you'll see here and here, are new. And they're shown at about a five-year growth rate from when we put them in, so not too long. And then likewise, what you're seeing here along that linear park that's along the south side of Delmar Heights, those trees are all at that same, you know, five years.
Along that north side of Delmar Heights Road, is there going to be any compromise? How is it going to impact the condominiums that are built along there? Are they, is there going to be any land taken from that hillside there that runs onto Delmar Heights?
The proposed improvement on the north side would be done within the existing right-of-way. So there would be no take of land for that sloped area that separates the Delmar Heights Road from East Bluff. And that slope is not maintained by East Bluff, it's maintained by the Highlands. So the master association takes care of that. But all of our work would be down at, within the right-of-way and would not involve a taking of additional property.
Okay, so it wouldn't involve the Delmar Highlands area that is maintained by the, their association?
It would, it would be involved in that their landscaping comes down to the right-of-way and actually into the right-of-way. So we'd have to interface and possibly change the irrigation system and, and create a debarcation point from where they maintain and what would be maintained on the street. So we would have to interface and work with the Highlands Association to make that happen.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm, I hate to sound so negative, but having spent time in Spain and on the Champs Elysees and on the Ring Road in Vienna, call, calling this a boulevard is not really quite right. This is enhanced landscaping. If you were building the, if you were building the office buildings you're entitled to, a great deal of this parcel would be landscaped space of one kind or another. It might be public, might not be, might be semi-public. Certainly we would be asking you to, to extend the trail system through the project and improve the circulation in the town center. I don't see these extraordinary benefits at all. In terms of a real boulevard and a frontage road, the, but it's not so important to have a frontage road for the cars unless it really would pull them out of the main traffic and let them wait to get into the project on their own time, as it were. But it would also take the bicycles off the main street. And, and to actually say that you can't do El Camino Real with more, with that kind of a streetscape, because you don't own the property on the other side. You own the property on your side and you can extend that right-of-way into your property. I, I'm just, I'm very disappointed that you're calling this a boulevard. A boulevard has a big, more than a parking strip of landscaped area, perhaps even berms. And the inside of the boulevard with the benches, the people, the bicycles, the kiosks, whatever, is actually a place. It's not just an enhanced major arterial with benches that frankly, I doubt if anybody much is going to sit on. And in terms, in terms of creating these intersections so people can cross the street, and you don't want to do a real boulevard space because then the street would be wider. They only have to cross into the boulevard space and then they're there. In addition, you talk about platooning the cars, so everybody doesn't have to keep stopping. In great big cities, they really do that. They platoon the cars and then all four sides of the intersection, and diagonally too, everybody swarms into the intersection and everybody stops and then all the cars go. I don't see that many people crossing the street at these intersections. This isn't a major city. There aren't, there aren't big apartment blocks on the other side. Do the, do the, do the magic traffic counters count the number of people waiting to cross the street? Or the people in the side streets attempting to, to go someplace besides their neighborhood?
It, it's an interesting point that you raise. And I, I, I don't know how to quite answer, you know, whether it fits the definition of a European boulevard or not. It's much more than what we typically consider a boulevard in this country. But nevertheless, I think that, one of the things, and I heard at a previous meeting, nobody walks in Carmel Valley. And I think part of that is because there's no place to walk to or ability to walk across the streets. And I think that has to be put into place.
Can, can everyone hold their clapping, please? We're limited time. We have about 40 minutes left.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I've lived here since the beginning. I've lived here since 68 and watched it happen and was disappointed that the town center wasn't a real civic center, but was just a shopping center and some walled-off uses. I mean, look at the way you get into the library, the road isn't even continuous between the rest of the community and the library. But, but this, this isn't it, you know? And additionally, if you set aside more space on the edges, so that those are actually places in themselves, the height of whatever you're eventually going to propose in terms of, of buildings, of stories and density and mass of buildings, is set further back from where everybody is. It's not a big wall on your property with lots and lots of density inside. And that will lead to your project feeling more like the generally low-rise and overly wide streets and generally sprawling effect of Carmel Valley, which most people who live here, not necessarily me, almost everybody else actually likes a lot. So I, I would really encourage, I, I don't see this as an extraordinary benefit. You certainly don't deserve a development agreement for, for these proposals. Anyone who's, who's asking for a change in zoning up, we would be asking for these trail improvements, like the bike trail and, and the trail through to the beach. Those are things we need and would be asking for in returning for the upzone. It has nothing to do with extraordinary benefits. Anyway, thanks, thanks for trying, but this.
Doesn't go far enough.
Yeah.
Hi, I want to echo what, what Ann said. I, I agree completely with her. And also getting back to what was mentioned on the other side of the, of the table about the bike lanes. We live in Pacific Islands Ranch and our sidewalks look similar to the picture that's up on the, on the board. And I think that most parents feel, while there is some shrubbery, parkway separation from the main road, it still scares a lot of people to walk on those sidewalks because of how, how fast the traffic is moving. And if there was any way to create more bike-walk separation with, where even the bicyclists could share with, with pedestrians, I've seen some master plan bike routes where there actually are walking lanes and bicycling lanes, just to protect our community members from the traffic. I think that would be well received as well. Thank you.
Just a couple items left. Wanted to neither compliment or pat you on the back about the crosswalks, but a good study of how useful such a thing is, is just looking at the, the bridge over Delmar Heights. And there's a, there's a multifamily property there, but I rarely see anybody trying to cross there. So, you know, activating the project is one thing, but I don't think those crosswalks are necessary if it makes something else work. Second, what, what, going to what John just said about the width of the, the linear parks, you did say you're setting aside 70 feet?
It's variable. It goes from 50 to 70 feet in some areas, so.
Seems like you could do a lot with that. You know, we're probably not asking for more than you have room for, so continue to listen. And then the final thing is a question. How do, how does a developer's contribution to Caltrans, I assume that's what you're talking about for that connection, how does that move the timetable up? And where does it move it from 2050?
Oh, I'm, on the Civil Rec Trail?
Uh, yeah.
So our goal is actually to, they're going through the certification of their environmental document right now. So we anticipate and hope that by the time the project, the One Paseo project actually gets, begins implementation and construction, that they will have a certified document that we can then go out and help advance, whether it's through the design, excuse me, the providing, advancing the funding, as I think was pointed out by, I believe it was Frisco or Manjeet. So either we would advance the funding and then, some of the, the funding for it is already in the existing FBA for Carmel Valley. And so we would work with the, the city to be able to advance those funds, so that it's not just waiting for those funds to come in and then work with Caltrans also on getting their portion of it, so that we could actually help go out and get that implemented, so.
So your impression is that, that the delay to 2050 is all about funding once it gets through planning?
I think it's partially funding, but because it's tied to their entire I-5 widening project, what we're finding is that it's coupled to some of their obligations, because in their case, it actually is mitigation. And so it's coupled to some of their obligations. So if we can figure out a way to uncouple it from that, then we could really advance that.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to the communities for questions. Is there a speaker that they can, or not speaker?
Yes, there's actually a microphone right up there, Frisco, if they, if you want to call them up.
Yeah. And there's like, I think we have like almost 200 speaker slips. We're not going to get to all of them. We'll do as much as we can. And so if we can take a minute and move to the other side, then we can see the audience.
What do we hope to move the chairs over to the other side?
We should go sit down.
No, we may have to point here.
Okay, then.
She'll sit in the same place that you were before.
Oh, we can watch the charging name back here. All right, I'm going to just do a handful at a time, those that are opposed and those that are in favor. I'm going to start with the opposed. One minute is, should be sufficient for each speaker, so that we can try and get through as many as we can. And so if I call your name and someone else has spoken about that same subject matter, you may just want to pass and give your time to someone else. So I'm going to start with Bob Hune. I think you were going to do a organized presentation, but I think that has changed And then Bob Hune is next. And then Bob Hune is next. And then Carrie Key after that. Carrie didn't want to speak, so sorry.
Do you mind, can we turn off that light? Because I think it's blinding a couple of our members. It'll just create some extra shadows if you guys don't mind, but thank you. Appreciate it. Plus, you're getting hot back there, I'm sure.
As you said, I was prepared to do a slide presentation on behalf of What Price Main Street, but you had asked that if what we were going to be talking about that did not directly relate to the subject matter of this, that I do that at a later time, and I respect that request. Basically, the various elements that they put forth, I don't have any problem with. It's kind of like icing on the cake. The big problem, and we didn't talk about that, is will I or the community get indigestion from the cake? We didn't hear much about that. I have one specific question relating to the adaptive traffic control system. And I'm wondering if Mr. Leopard had gone to the city of San Marcos to find out how their system is working. I did do that and I found, and what the chief engineer told me, was that it works fairly well when the traffic is not near capacity. It doesn't work at all when it is worth capacity. And I'm wondering what mitigations is Kilroy going to do to keep the traffic on Delmar Height Road below capacity so it has a chance to work?
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. Bob has addressed the traffic aspect. Let me address Mike Stepner and his partner's contribution to this, which I will echo several board members, is absolutely terrific. It's going to be much more friendly, externally facing. That's great. But as I listened to, we're now going to have the setback expanded to 70 feet. And as I saw all the pictures, as a couple of people commented, of plazas and piazzas and large landscaped gathering areas and avenues and all of that, I said to myself, okay, one of two things is going to happen. Either we're going to get all of those things in the scale that we saw on all those beautiful slides and the buildings are going to be way higher and way denser than what we've been led to believe, or the improvements, the avenues are going to be like horse trails and the gathering areas and the piazzas are going to probably be no bigger than a swimming pool. You can't have it both ways. It's a 23-acre parcel. We can't have everything with it. Mike, where's Mike? There you are. The city owes you a debt of gratitude for everything that you have done for it over the years that you were city planner. My wish, and hopefully a few other people here, is that they keep you on the payroll for this project. You stick to your guns that we do get all of those things that were promised in the slides. And when they come to you and say, the only way we can do that is to decrease it by half, you say, well, then that's what you ought to do. Thank you.
It's very, you know, it's great to show your support of a speaker, but it does take time. Next, De Rich and William Bob. Then after William Bob, I'm going to go on to the four people, Linda Katzman and Michael Go ahead, Dee.
I'm speaking from a perspective of having been on the high school board for 24 years, and I worry about our students. And I like some of the ideas of making walking and biking safer. But I'm also concerned if all these wonderful enhancements don't happen. And then Frisco has already mentioned the maintenance assessment district to pay for these wonderful enhancements. So what has happened in the past is the school district has picked up a lot of the money for the medians going past the schools and hopefully more money doesn't need to come out of education to pay to maintain the new enhancements. Okay. Also CivRep, it's going to end up in the Torrey Pines community. And there hasn't been any discussion with the Torrey Pines community of how, I mean, we'd be really excited to see a connection to the beach, but it would be nice if somebody talked to the Torrey Pines community. And last, we also have a lot of concerns because the other side of the freeway is serviced by the same fire department and emergency services. And we are very worried that the fire truck won't be able to get through. So made it real short.
Linda Katzman and Michael Williams. Is Michael Williams here?
Yeah.
If you can start lining up so that we can be a little bit more efficient. Then Joe Ritzman and Tom Perez.
Yes. Hi, I've been a Carmel Valley homeowner and resident for over 17 years, and I feel very fortunate to be in one of the best communities in San Diego County. I really commend Kilroy for listening to the residents' concerns and working with us and the city to address solutions to them, as I think they've really demonstrated tonight by their presentation. The anticipated plans for One Paseo, designed by one of the top architectural teams in the nation, is an excellent way to give us what our neighborhood needs. And looking at the big picture, how many of you have tried to get onto the totally gridlocked freeways going north and south on a Friday night to travel to another community for entertainment or dining purposes? Carmel Valley has grown in population and we need One Paseo's amenities to properly service our community. So we will have to spend little, if any, time leaving our neighborhood. I think all the solutions and everything we've seen tonight really addresses that, and I feel it's time for us to move forward and get One Paseo built. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Williams, then Joe Ritzman. Is Joe Ripman here? Tom Perez? Carrie McCarroll? You'll be after this gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you, Frisco. Mike Williams, North County resident. I have been very encouraged tonight by the turnout, and I challenge everyone here to really take to heart what has been presented. Smart growth is exactly what One Paseo has always been represented as being, and I think the features that are the byproduct of a density such as being sought and reflected in the plans that we've all seen for well over two years, as far as my involvement, are reflected here. I've heard a lot of concern being expressed about the delivery of what we've been presented tonight, and I can only attest, being in the business, that I think that the city of San Diego is well-qualified, development agreement or not, to make sure that the conditions of an approval, once it gets to that level, would certainly be representative of including, rather, all of the things that you've seen here tonight. And I would encourage both sides of the presentation tonight to take to heart what's been presented and weigh the factors of the community benefit and the enrichments that are taking place with private development money and an opportunity to fulfill a 30-plus-year-old plan that had visions for this area and this community to take exactly the position that Kilroy is trying to take it. I thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to state my simple support for this project. What One Paseo defines for me is smart growth and community connectivity. I've been blessed to live in places like Portland, Oregon, that enjoy these types of benefits on a daily basis. So coming back to San Diego, it's really important for me to have and support this type of building in our community. One Paseo serves to inform what San Diego can actually have in our future, something that, a development that thinks outside of the box, that combines walkability, livability, bicyclists, you name it, cars even for our community. So this project is really important to me because I've had so much passion coming from Portland to live like this and to give it to San Diego. I think this project encompasses something that San Diego itself hasn't even seen. So Carmel Valley really has an opportunity here to put forth and really inform our future development. I absolutely encourage you to rethink opposition to this project and take a good look at what they are offering for the community and support it yourselves. Thank you.
And you are Carrie, correct?
Yes.
Robert Goodman and Harold Wheatz? Nick Caston and then Meredith Victor? Kent Dial? Ray Mello? Okay, who's?
Meredith Victor.
Okay, and then you must be Ray Mello?
Kent Dial.
Oh, there's Kent. Okay.
Hi, I'd like to start out by saying I'm not much of a public speaker and I don't usually get involved in community events, but I'm pretty passionate about this project because I've come from living in West Philadelphia and I've lived in North Park and I've lived in a lot of bustling areas. And when I first moved up here, I noticed that I always wanted to leave the area so that I could go to somewhere more exciting, especially when I had visitors. And that's kind of what you were saying about feeling like you need to leave the neighborhood to show off your community, to show off San Diego. And since I've moved here, the community has really grown on me quite a bit, and I've just found myself wishing that there were a little bit more. And I've said so many times to Nick that I just wish if we had one more area, just a little bit more, I wouldn't feel like I was always wanting to escape the area when my parents came to visit or when my sister came to visit, to show off San Diego and tell them how great it was. And I just got so excited when I heard all about it. And the opposition kind of surprises me because I think a lot of it's just fear-based and the idea that maybe it could, well, it could create more traffic. It could create things like holdups. But the thing is, why is that so bad in comparison to what it could bring for us? Think about all of the new restaurants that we could have in a Trader Joe's that's walking distance. I'm a physical therapist. I believe in walking. I believe in...
Meredith, please excuse me for a second. We have to show respect for these speakers. It's your turn as well, and so if you are not going to show respect, I will terminate this meeting. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
You can finish up, Meredith.
That's really all I wanted to say, is just give it a chance. And I appreciate people coming out and voicing dissent and voicing support. I think what Kilroy is doing is wonderful because they're listening to people. So I just hope that we can take that into consideration and maybe let the community grow. Thank you.
Hey?
I'm Kent Dial. I have been a supporter of this since the first time I saw the proposal in its infant stages. I've spoken on several occasions about why I think this is a good opportunity for enhancing the growth of Carmel Valley. We just came back from Sacramento where I was able to experience on Friday night an area called the Fountains, which is near the Granite Bay area of Sacramento. And I was absolutely blown away. I've had a vision in my mind for what One Paseo might be, and I saw it firsthand on Friday night, and it was unbelievable. I wish every one of you that support it and those of you who are opposed to it could go to someplace like this and see what it really is like. There's another area called Eldorado Hills. On Sunday, we had brunch there. Same thing. It was a bedroom community that was carved out of the hills, and they created an area that is very much like One Paseo is envisioned to be. And I am, continue to be supportive of the One Paseo project. I think what we've seen here tonight is just several other reasons why this is going to be a great improvement and a great enhancement for Carmel Valley. Thank you. I live in Section 3 and everybody seems to be concerned about the traffic, and there really isn't very much traffic here compared to the rest of the city. So in this project, the way it's set up and the flow and the new regulations on the intersections will make it even better. This is a wonderful way to fill in that dust bowl we've had for 30 years. And I really would like the board to move ahead on this project, as I've said in the past. This is a great opportunity for us, and I'd like to get it done by 2015, perhaps? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Facella and Doug Phillipsen and Rosaria Beletta. Are those three people here?
Right here. I've been a resident in Carmel Valley since 1989. I'm a retired engineer and physicist, and I'm opposed to this project. First of all, I want to note from Kilroy, where is the model of this project that they said they would produce at the next meeting? I don't see a model of it. I don't see where the buildings are, et cetera. The traffic is already bad in Delmar Heights Road and El Camino Real. And so what we need is, we need the enhanced traffic system now, not after this project, if it is going to be built, is built. We need that, we need the traffic system now. I think this is an inappropriate project. There is no electric public transportation down El Camino Real. And so, and we need a trolley or something from Carmel Valley Road all the way to Delmar Heights, all the way to Villa de La Vaya, and maybe that might help, but we don't have it and I don't think we're going to get it. And I think that this project will wreck the serenity of this area, and that's my opinion.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Phillipsen. I live on the other side of the five, so this is not my community per se, but tonight's not about the specifics of the project, so I feel like I live in the greater community and have a reason to speak. A lot of mention was made about the community plan, right? And when the community plan was instituted, there was a density given for this parcel. And what I haven't heard is a reason why that density should be tripled or quadrupled. And I think that's a really key issue. So the environmental impact also shows that the question really isn't about the project per se, it's about the density and from the density...
Excuse me, sir.
It's about the traffic. That's all I want to say.
Next is Reinhold Polner and Lawrence Schreiber. Are they not here? John Leach and Bob Scott? Tanner Eck? Bernadette Blanco? Anna Orlando? A lot of tardy slips here. Jennifer Maxson? Tracy Mead? Those were all people in favor of the project that wanted to speak. If I call your name, please raise your hand. So you are Tracy?
No.
Okay. Tracy's not here. Then after Jennifer, if we can have a single-name Keller and then Mrs. Goldstein? Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, my husband and I are Southern California residents and moved out to DC and loved the idea of being able to walk everywhere. So when we moved out to San Diego, we wanted to buy a house. And our first home, we decided would be perfectly positioned in Delmar Highlands. We love the fact that we can bring our dog and walk to the area. I'm a business owner. I bring all of my clients to the town center. I work out of Starbucks half the time, and I absolutely love the idea to be able to walk to another community. I think it's an absolutely perfect idea for growth in the community. It stimulates the economy and creates jobs, and I'm in full support. And I think that they have actively looked at all of the opposition and taken a great note of everybody's opinions and actually addressed all of the issues. So I'm in full support and I hope you all can consider that. Thank you.
And thank you for this forum so that everyone could present their opinions and get all this information. You started the meeting referring to the 1975 plan, and you were itemizing those...
You started the meeting referring to the 1975 plan, and you were itemizing those items about pedestrian walkways, but I didn’t see the whole 1975 plan about the use of this land, and I think the master plan called for the 510,000 square foot density. So my question is, will I get an opportunity to see that plan that was originally set forth by the planners of this community? And also, when I look at the trees, they look beautiful, but I don’t know what’s beyond the trees. Are there more buildings? Are there eight-story buildings? Are there other things to see beyond the trees? I’m just seeing a line of trees, but I don’t see the rest of the picture. So again, I would like to see the full picture beyond the trees and the rest of the 1975 plan. Thank you.
I do have a whole bunch of speaker slips for both sides that do not want to speak. Mindy Scaroni, if you are still here? William Fee, how do you pronounce that last name? Okay, thank you. Ben Joan Gogwigno? Is she not here?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn’t check the box? And then H. Goldstein? Peter Korn? I think this is Paul Ringrose? Okay. Then Walter Carlin? Then I’m going to take a couple more, and then I think we are going to be hitting the 9:30 bewitching time. Go ahead.
Hi, I’m Alyssa Goldstein Sepinwall. I’m a professor of history at Cal State San Marcos, and I’ve been a Carmel Valley resident for thirteen and a half years, during which time I’ve commuted also to San Marcos. I’m wearing summer casual, just like John today. I don’t want to repeat a lot of what people said, but what we’ve talked about tonight is whether Kilroy has addressed community concerns, whether these are extraordinary benefits that alleviate them asking for three times what they’re allowed, and I’d also like to respond to a few things briefly that were said. We have the issue of the size, we have the issue of the model, which we’d all like to see beyond the trees. The issue of traffic is still very important. Bob mentioned it, but it’s important to say that that 15 to 40 percent number about San Marcos seems absolutely fantastical. It’s a number that’s gotten thrown around, we haven’t found any evidence for it. I am in San Marcos all the time. I want to tell you, you do not want Carmel Valley to become like San Marcos. The problem is, no matter how beautiful the traffic light synchronization is, there’s a freeway, and it has metering lights, and if everyone can’t get on it at the same time, we’re going to be backed up all the way up. And the trees are lovely, but I’m sorry, it felt a little bit like lipstick on a pig. We’ll have nice trees to look at while we’re all stuck. More importantly, the neighborhood to the north where I live and the school. I’m happy to hear Kilroy being honest and admitting that to avoid the traffic on Delmar Heights Road, there are likely going to be people detouring, but Salana Highlands Elementary School is there. My son will be a first grader, there are a lot of small children. We do not need traffic diverting there to get away from this project. It’s also true, the intersections, if I could just jump up there for a second? No reason pedestrians to have these intersections, precisely because this neighborhood is a lovely, walkable neighborhood that has a tree barrier to keep it nice and walkable and insulated from the highway. So if you have a crosswalk here, it’s to trees, unless you want to rip into people’s backyard.
And you might want to wrap it up, too.
Also, I’m a historian, so I love hearing about ideas of how this was planned, but it’s thirty-eight years later, the community has developed organically. We have a community core. We have the library, park, school-
If you can start wrapping it up, please.
Okay. That’s what I have to say. I think we have a core. Do we need this? I don’t think the things today convince me that we do. Thank you for the time.
Hi, I’m Willie Fajowak, and I also live in the Delmar Highlands, just north of that neighborhood. And I have not lived here that long. I moved here from Chicago in 2007. However, my wife was in the first graduation class from Torrey Pines, so she’s very familiar with what this area looked like. And right now, and with this plan, isn’t what it looked like, isn’t what it was planned for. What the improvements they show are better than it was before, but they’re just leaving out the part of the buildings. We get to see the little walk, the little tree-lined walkways. If I was a horse with blinders on, that’s what it looked like to me. I know that there are plans for six, eight, I don’t know, maybe even ten-story buildings there. If they move those buildings down to two or three stories, then maybe we’re talking, that might be a good plan. That’s what I’d like to see. I’ve seen stuff like this in Chicago, we heard about Sacramento, Portland and everything. They’re fine, those are nice, they’re nice places to go, but I don’t want to live there. Thank you.
Hi, I’m Walter Carlin. Those are two tough acts to follow. But, speaking of acts, I’m sure all the way home, which is across the bridge in Delmar Heights there, I’ll be humming String of Pearls. But in any case, just two quotes. One, this is from the Los Angeles Times, May 3, 1989. The title of the article is “North City West: Last Chance for Excellence.” Quote, “It’s hard not to feel that the potential for profit has overshadowed the opportunity to build a great new people place from scratch.” The other one, quote-wise, is “Those who have not learned from the past are doomed to repeat it.” So think of what that earlier speaker said about density, don’t get wrapped up in these boulevards. Talking about the boulevards, I was waiting next to Barcelona, running out of the bulls. Where are you going to put them in Carmel Valley once we got the bulls through? Hey, you want to do something with these bulls? I mean, what are we going to do about that, you know? Anyhow, that’s it. Thank you, good luck.
We’re going to wrap up the evening with the final three speakers. Gabrielle Prater, Jean Helso, and Jack Holtzman. Is Jean here? And Jack? If you can line up. And it would be helpful for the final three to somewhat help us make decisions and recommendations based on what you saw this evening, and so if you can keep your subject matter to tonight’s topic.
Thank you. Gabrielle Prater, I’m a twenty-two-year resident of Carmel Valley. I’ve been on this, sitting on this planning board for eight years in the past, and I must say, keeping it short, and a lot of things that I was going to say have been said, but I, this is the first positive thing that I’ve heard about this project. Certainly, I’m not going to be opposed to a wider setback, to more trees, to more friendly areas, an openness to the community rather than a citadel fortress kind of image. All that’s good, but it’s frosting on the cake, icing on the cake. The problem is, and will always be until it’s fixed, the extreme square footage of the development. 1.4 million dollars, a million square feet. It doesn’t go away with a couple of pretty trees. It has to be shrunk down to size. When I was on the planning board, most developers came in with their project, they always asked for more than the entitlement. But we worked something out, and usually they got between 10 and maybe 20 percent more. In this case, 20 percent more would be 600,000 square feet. So why can Kilroy be happy with that kind of solution? Why are they asking for three times as much? It’s outrageous. One other thing I’d like to say, and actually, I was very encouraged to hear that the city has requested a substantially reduced alternative project. I think that some of these measures that were talked about today, and the project reduced to six to 800, I don’t know, 800, 600, maybe 700,000 square feet, I think that might be a winner. With a mixed project of that size, with those nice trees and the setbacks and so forth, that might be a winner for Carmel Valley. And I’m going to wrap it up. I just want to say something because I grew up in Europe in a city that’s the size of San Diego, and I loved it when somebody talked about Barcelona. In the city I come from, the entire downtown, which goes back to the Middle Ages, the entire downtown is a pedestrian mall. There is no traffic there at all. So how are people getting there? Well, they get there because the whole thing is covered with subways, and you go there by subway from outlining areas, you can get there in a minute, and then you can walk around all over downtown. And let’s not kid ourselves, with this project here, nobody’s going to be walking except for maybe the people that live very close by, but everybody else, everybody, will be bringing their car, park there, and then walk. So let’s not talk about walkability, bikeability, as though we’re all getting on our bikes and riding around on bikes. That’s not how it happens in reality. That’s all I have to say. Thank you.
She is always a tough act to follow, I’ll tell you. What I’ve heard tonight, really, Gabriel alluded to, is really a lot of fluff. It’s like adding the cotton balls to the clown’s costume. You’ve done nothing really to change the basic structure of this development. And I have a question for Kilroy. When can we expect to see the 500 to 600,000 square feet project that you are now entitled to? And would you be willing to continue with these improvements on a smaller project?
Do you want a response from Kilroy? Because you’re not addressing the subject matter of this evening.
Well, the subject, the subject matter is the connectivity of this project to our community. And the connectivity, connectivity has little to do with the trees that are lining our streets, with the bicycles, with the pedestrians. This project is an island, it’ll be an island because it is not an integral part of the community. It will never be as long as we have El Camino, High Bluff, and Delmar Heights Road. It’s doomed to fail, and they’re trying to pawn this off as a community center where it is a regional destination served by cars. And I don’t think we want that.
I’m a retired PhD engineer who’s quite knowledgeable with traffic analysis, and first let me say what I agree with, with the comment made tonight, that smoothing out traffic is good. That is certainly true. There’s limits to what you can do. As you approach overload, it doesn’t work. And you can show that both theoretically and you can show it experimentally on San Marcos Boulevard. That brings you to the question, are there places where there’s overload caused by this project? In the original DER, there are some spots which are LOS, Level of Service E and Level of Service F. I’d like to remind people that Level of Service F is completely unacceptable, it means a complete breakdown of traffic. Level of Service E may be marginally acceptable. It is very vulnerable to becoming Level of Service F with any variations in traffic. Furthermore, it’s, the official definition in the Highway Capacity Manual is causing physical and psychological discomfort for drivers. So I would suggest that in the new, the revised DER, which I haven’t seen, look very carefully to see if there’s any spots with Level of Service E and Level of Service F. I just don’t know what’s in there, but it’s just something to look for. Thank you.
No, that was it. Jack was the final speaker. It’s after 9:30, and we have to be out by 10. Well, I got word that we have-
I want to say-
No.
I want to say it anyway, because the thing is that the real estate community, the players in the commercial real estate community know that this project is-
Excuse me, sir, the meeting, public testimony is over. No, public testimony is over, sir.
It’s going to draw people from a twenty-mile radius-
It’s over. But anyway, as I mentioned earlier, the DER is going to be recirculated, but not the entire, not the entire document that I’m aware of, and-
What departments?
Pardon?
What departments?
I don’t know. And the city has asked, want Kilroy to do a 600 to 800,000 square foot alternate. So that being said, the project is still going to come back for further consideration. So thank you for coming this evening.